... mayor and council. Oh, I think we're speeding through the sides. If you can go back, please, to the first one. Even even further back, just one more, please. Thank you. So I have been charged as the chief resilience officer to participate in the cross-functional team and oversee the community vulnerabilities and human services activities that are going on in light of COVID-19. I want to be very clear about what that means and what the things our our part of the team are working on. We are focused on supporting the most vulnerable El Pasoans as we navigate through the impacts of the COVID-19 crisis. I want to be clear, and I think Dr. Coranza touched on this, as well as city manager, when he did the overview, is that a lot of the challenges that we're seeing, the deep challenges that we're trying to address, are not necessarily challenges that were created by the COVID-19 virus or the crisis. Rather, the COVID-19 crisis has exacerbated those deep challenges that already existed within our community. And that's especially true when we talk about community vulnerability and human services. The challenges that our team is focused primarily on addressing are things like housing affordability, which you all have heard me speak to many times in council chambers, utility cost burden, access to food and food security, and individual financial stability of El Pasoans. This is about the ability of El Pasoans and El Paso families to continue to enjoy a quality of life afforded to them by a level of financial stability and an access to the basic needs that we all enjoy. We're charged with equitably deploying relief programs and support to ensure that we have an inclusive and resilient recovery. It's important that we know that all of the investments that we are making today while we are responding to the crisis, we are also looking towards the future and making sure that our community ultimately comes out of this crisis stronger and more prepared than ever before. Next slide, please. We've already started to do quite a bit. This this work began immediately upon the sort of activation of our emergency response and the the start of this crisis dating back all the way to March. Looking at, first off, how do we shelter the most vulnerable in our community? You all remember, and I've spoken to it several times already, the investment we made in an alternate emergency shelter for our communities homeless. This is something that we did very quickly, in in short order, and in some cases, more quickly than even some other communities. We've invested a lot of time and funds into this. This has made possible, and I'm going to speak a little more to what it's doing. It's been made possible by the partnership across a lot of community stakeholders, but as well the strength of the collaboration within this organization and the partnerships that we've established. And I'm going to recognize those folks in just a moment. But it's important to note that we have, in large part, contained the spread of the virus amongst the homeless population. Since I last spoke with you all, there have been a few cases, a few positive cases within the homeless community. But again, compared to other cities, which which we've heard that on a number of occasions, we are really doing well to protect these this vulnerable population. We immediately activated emergency funding related to food security. We've all been witness to the length of the lines at the Food Bank and the miraculous work that Susan Goodell and her team at El Pasoans Fighting Hunger have been doing since day one, and the way that the community has come out in support of them. We did that immediately. You did that immediately as a body. We deployed that emergency funding in the amount of $100,000 for the Food Bank to support their needs. And I'll speak to the additional needs as we go forward in this presentation. We then took a moment and a deep breath, and we knew that as as we always do in this organization, we proceed based on data. We proceed pragmatically. We analyze the best move forward. We look at best practice, and we make sure that we have an understanding of why we are investing and what we are investing in and how that's going to have a long-term impact in our community. So we deployed a comprehensive needs assessment, which I spoke to last time, and I'll speak I'll speak to a little bit later in in my presentation as to what the output of that was. But it was very important, and I have to emphasize that while speed and agility was very important in getting the support out, which we did in the first two items that I mentioned, it was also important that we be diligent, and we do our due diligence, and we make sure that not only we are addressing our moral duty, but also our fiscal responsibility and address the needs of the community in a comprehensive way. We additionally convened a vulnerable population support task force that included stakeholders from service providers across this community, primarily serving the vulnerable population. And we provided access to PPE for those social service providers. And when I say we provided access, I mean we, in the context of this entire organization and this team, we convened the task force. We created a streamlined communication process for super service providers to request that PPE. And we then forwarded that through to the EOC logistics team, whom very diligently provided that for those folks. But it was important that we streamline that process so that we make sure that the folks that needed it got it. And that was a very successful effort, and it continues to be. In addition, we began immediately communicating with our loan program borrowers. There's an item on the agenda following this presentation. We'll all discuss that in more depth in terms of what we'd like to do going forward to provide that relief. But when I speak to that, I'm speaking to individual El Pasoans that participate in programs like the First Time Home Buyer Program. And so really working with our client list, because we do view them as clients, and and working with them to make sure that we were providing that relief right away. In addition to that, we activated our network of volunteers and our neighborhood associations. And I'm going to speak to that in more depth in a moment. But we created a network where El Pasoans are helping El Pasoans. That's what we do best. That's what our community is known for. I've said many times, as I've spoken in our community, at the state level and nationally, that El Paso's greatest asset has always been and always will be her people and the family that we've established in this community. And so the El Pasoans Helping El Pasoans Program was something that was sorely needed, not only for the mental health of our community, but for the well-being of the most vulnerable. We convened community partnerships, like I mentioned. We activated the social service providers that we work with regularly via the federal entitlement. We have those networks in place. We were well-positioned to be able to catalyze and coalesce those groups to have the greatest impact in our community as quickly as possible. But we also reached out to our philanthropic partners. Our two community foundations here in El Paso have been stellar, absolutely stellar in terms of really getting in front of the need and and supporting both service providers and the community. Next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. So as I mentioned, we stood up an alternate emergency shelter in the immediate aftermath of the crisis in order to protect our homeless population and relieve the pressure on our local emergency shelters. What was happening is that while those shelters were not necessarily at full capacity under normal conditions, they were at a capacity that did not allow them to adhere to the CDC guidelines for social distancing. We knew we needed to get in front of that right away, as I already mentioned. We also knew that we could provide a single point of entry for the homeless in our community and make sure that there was an opportunity for us to be able to provide screening for the homeless as they enter this facility. What we have done is we have deployed that process. You come in through the Delta site. Temperature is taken, symptoms are assessed. If someone is symptomatic, they are immediately isolated. They're at the facility. It was one of the the reasons why we selected this this site, because we had smaller rooms that we could utilize to provide that temporary isolation and keep these symptomatic individuals away from the broader homeless population. We immediately coordinate and contact the EOC, and we get those folks transported and tested. They are isolated within a hotel environment until we can confirm whether they are positive or not. If they are positive, they stay in that hotel environment, isolated and quarantined. If they are not, they are returned to this facility. We are also now moving on coordinating transportation for homeless to and from the Delta site and to and from testing and quarantine facilities. This is something that we have worked with a network of partners, but it has been spearheaded by Endeavors, whom you all received a presentation from yesterday. Justin Roddy gave the presentation about what Endeavors is doing for our veterans. But Endeavors has really been a key partner in being able to provide the services and hold up this facility. They are doing that in partnership with the operator of one of our largest emergency shelters, whom you all are also familiar with, the Opportunity Center for the Homeless. This partnership has been an absolute godsend for this community, and it has allowed us to protect this most vulnerable of populations. I will also take a moment to thank one of our private sector partners, Cisco Systems. Ms. Barbara Walker has, from day one, been a fantastic partner in donating the technology that we needed to provide a digital interface to allow for coordinated entry, which is, in essence, how we process and do intake for homeless individuals and make sure that as they're processed into the welcome center, that they are, we are also able to move them upward and onward, either to another shelter facility that is is more appropriate for them, for instance, in the case of families, but also potentially connecting them with permanent housing, if that's possible. And I'm going to speak a little bit more to that later in terms of the kinds of programs we hope to be funding in order to keep this effort going forward. But I would be remiss also if I didn't hearken back to the partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department. I know that interim director Ben Fife spoke briefly to it yesterday. But Ben and his team have been remarkable in terms of really working with us to set this shelter up in short order. I want to take a special moment to recognize Joe Rodriguez and Hawk Scott. These two gentlemen in the Parks Department are superstars. These are rock stars within our our organization, and they deserve the recognition because without them, this could not have been possible. And so I just, I feel it's just so important to take a moment and recognize those individuals that might not otherwise have the opportunity to speak to this body and recognize them. We have committed just over or just about $1.3 million to date in support of the shelter. And I will get into detail about what that's going to later. That's coming out of the Emergency Solutions Grant. Next slide, please. I mentioned already El Pasoans caring for El Pasoans. Immediately when this crisis began, we activated our senior core staff, our city staff who coordinate senior volunteers across the city. They do this on a regular basis. I've reported to you all on several occasions. We oversee 700 to 800 senior volunteers at any given time. The staff came together and recreated a program that we used to do all the time called Calling All Seniors. It was where, kind of a senior-to-senior phone tree network, where we just did wellness checks on our vulnerable seniors in our community. Our staff jumped right in front of this and reactivated that program. To date, we have made over 1,100 calls to seniors in our community, checking on them, making sure that they're doing okay, assessing if they need anything. If they are needing resources or referrals, we're able to do that, refer them to the Food Bank, refer them to the Catholic Diocese, refer them to testing if that is what they are in need of. But at the end of the day, it's it's not just access to resources. It's about calling our neighbors, calling seniors, and just talking to them, making a birthday call, making sure that as they are isolated during this very difficult time, that they don't feel isolated and that they know that they are not alone. Our staff has done a tremendous job activating that. I also need to take a moment to recognize our Neighborhood Coalition. The Neighborhood Associations have always been an extraordinary component of our community, and they have always done amazing activities. But during this time, they have really stepped up. And I want to take a moment to especially recognize Fabiola Campos-Lopez. She is the president of the Neighborhood Coalition, and many of you know her. Fabi, you are a superstar. She has really taken the time to make sure that the Coalition and the associations are still meeting regularly. They are doing Google Hangouts and Zoom calls. They are staying connected. Again, the isolation, I think we all take for granted how, what kind of an impact that can have on the mental health of our community. And so by by our neighbors, checking on neighbors, we are really getting in front of that and reminding folks that we are a family. But we are also making sure that people have access to the information, the local directives, the local directive, the social distancing, the news about how we are moving towards a reopening. It's just so important that folks get that information from a reliable source, and our Neighborhood Coalition has been fabulous for that. Over 90 neighbor checks, neighbor-to-neighbor checks have been conducted so far. So thank you to that team for doing such an amazing job. I will close this slide by just saying that we are working now, both with our Human Resources Department and Workforce Solutions Border Plex. We're looking at how we may have an opportunity to expand this program if we're able to either bring on staff that they have, that they can pay for. We're working with them. That program is not set in stone yet. We're still working the details of that. But if there's an opportunity to expand welfare checks and expand our capacity to do this, we are we are going to do that. And we'll be bringing that back to council as we have more details. Next slide, please. Digital access has been a primary challenge, I think, amongst our most vulnerable community. Not everyone enjoys the access to the Internet and and this connectivity that we're sharing now as easily as we do. And so we have really been working and trying to communicate with our IT department to see not only what facilities exist and what opportunities exist to provide that access in our community, but also how can we look towards potentially expanding that as a result of COVID? Because we know that that digital connection and that access is more important than ever. I know that Adiselli is is on the line. If there's any questions at the end of all of this presentation, I think she and I can kind of tag team and answer those. But to date, you know, there's expanded access to 26 city facilities. They are sharing information about where location and coverage exists on epstrong.com. So again, we're trying to communicate that. We're also leveraging the networks I previously mentioned with our neighbors and our seniors to make sure that those folks understand how they can get access, working with our educational partners, and just trying to keep everyone connected. The MiFi program, the the program where you can check out mobile Internet, is something that was a great success, has been a great success. And as I go through the presentation, I'm going to share with you some plans that we have that we think we can support expansion of that program as a result of this crisis. And so we're very, very excited to work with IT. They've also been a tremendous partner in this. You know, the community development team identified the need, and we have some of the funding. But we're at a loss when it terms, when it comes to how to deploy this program. And so being able to lean on such a tremendous bank of subject matter experts in our IT department has been really valuable, and I think it's going to help our community. Next slide, please. So the council has been very clear about how important stakeholder outreach is during this time, how important it is for us to coordinate with our stakeholder partners, with the community. And frankly, we could not agree with you more. We could not have our arms around how to best deploy the stimulus funding that we're getting, the the support and relief funding that we're getting if we did not lean on these stakeholder partners. And so we spent a lot of time doing that. And I want to walk you through how we've done that and and where we are and where we intend on going. We have, in the last two weeks alone, so this does not even include what we've been doing since March. But in the last two weeks alone, since we've last seen you all, we have had 109 stakeholder touchpoints. We conducted just over 40 calls with stakeholder partners in three days. That was a matter of our team really getting in front of it and and working overtime and getting in touch with folks. And I want to also be clear that when we have those calls and we have those stakeholder touchpoints, this is not about a simple check-the-box kind of survey and saying, okay, you're validating what we thought we already needed to know. This is a conversation that's based on the community needs assessment that we did when we first started. So phase one of our outreach was the needs assessment. As we start to prioritize the funding and we have these conversations with the over 50 agency partners that we've engaged with, we are really pushing and pulling and really having an intense dialogue about how can we prioritize the funding that we have to address the needs in the community, knowing how wildly mismatched those two things are. And I cannot emphasize that enough. There will never be enough money to do what we know we need to do. But we are doing our absolute best in partnership with our entire community to make sure that we prioritize and address the needs of those most vulnerable first. So moving into phase three, which is the policy framework and sort of feasibility feedback. So it's like, okay, we know where we can, we want to put the dollars. We understand what the needs are. But how do we build a policy framework that makes it feasible to deploy these dollars in a way that is quick, accessible to the general public, making sure that this is not a difficult process for them and that it doesn't take forever? I know that in in some circles, there has been discussion about, you know, why is this taking so long? I want to remind the council that typically, when we're dealing with much fewer dollars and much less need, this process takes over a year to conduct. And we've done it in a matter of weeks. And so working through that policy framework has been critically important, understanding what are the capacities of our stakeholder partners to deploy the programs and the funding that we are recommending to you. We have received over 300 data points that have informed all of that work. And I shared that with you all previously, and I'll show it on a on a subsequent slide and walk you through it a little, once again, to remind you. But to date, we have committed just over $1.7 million, $1.8 million, primarily that has gone into what you saw with the Food Bank, as well as with the alternate emergency shelter. As we deploy these funds and we move forward, our stakeholder outreach is not done. It's so important that as we deploy these funds and these programs that we understand the results and the measures, the performance measures in terms of how successful these programs are going to be. Are they moving the needle where we want them to? Are they having the impact in the community where we need to have the impact and how that impact needs to occur? If it's not, we need to know that, right? We need to be able to course correct as wave two. You know, nobody knows what wave two is going to look like. We know that there's additional funding potentially coming down from the federal government. There may be other grant sources that we can use to continue this work. But if we're not measuring how successful the initial deployment of the funds is, we will have no idea how to course correct. And that's just really, really important as we move forward. Next slide, please. So this is a slide that you all have seen before. It's been altered a little bit. What you're seeing on the right is the analysis of the need that we initially conducted. The 300-plus data points that I mentioned is what is informing the emphasis here. And so what you're seeing in red, the sort of red blocks that are under meeting basic needs and supporting livelihood and employment, that is where we heard not only the most comments regarding that these categories, that they are the most important, it is the most urgent need, but also that there are fewer resources currently deployed to these categories. And so that that creates a formula for urgency that says we need to prioritize the basic needs of El Pasoans, which means shelter, food, warmth, and water. And we also need to support livelihood and employment. We need to help El Pasoans get back on their feet. And that means getting back to business and getting back to work. And so a lot of emphasis is placed in those areas. I do want to say, though, that as we move forward with the feedback, we started to receive more and more comments in the green here that you see in this sort of teal color about how extensive the outreach we are doing is and how effective and thankful the stakeholders have been that we are committed to not just reaching out to them, but hearing them and listening to them and having their voices reflected in the recommendations that we make to this body. And that's why you see this teal-green as an area of strength in terms of empowering a broad range of stakeholders, promoting effective leadership and management. The city and our entire organization has really taken a leadership role in this community. And that doesn't mean dictating to others. It means collaborating with others and making sure that we're having an impact where we need to. And so in terms of the dollars and and what all of that feedback means, in the housing and basic needs category that we've mentioned is primary, we've allocated just over $19 million in the categories of rental assistance, utility assistance, mortgage assistance, homeless assistance, rapid rehousing, addressing and preventing domestic violence and abuse, addressing food security and making sure folks have access to food, as well as prioritizing a community assistance fund that can and will address the gaps that households are facing in terms of the basic needs that they need to provide for their families. In livelihood and employment, which is the second category I mentioned, we are prioritizing that with just over $1.6 million. That includes credit counseling and bankability. You all will recall at the last council meeting, we discussed alongside economic development the need for folks in our community, both individuals and small businesses, to be able to have access to credit counseling and increase their capacity and ability to pursue the funding sources that are available to them and stay stable after the crisis and, God willing, come out stronger than they went into that crisis. We are including childcare. We know how important it is that folks have access to childcare. I think Dr. Sylvia Acosta spoke at the last meeting very eloquently in terms of the importance of childcare and the role of women during this crisis. And so we have prioritized that as part of our funding. I mentioned already expansion of digital access, particularly for vulnerable populations, as well as support for independent contractors. Independent contractors are those hairstylists, nail techs, landscapers, construction workers, painters, folks like that that fall between the cracks of some of the small business assistance that is out there. I do want to take a moment now to credit our economic development team because they have been amazing. We have really spent a lot of time merging the the discussion in terms of community and economic response and recovery. And I know you're seeing it as two presentations today. But I want you all to know that our teams have been tied at the hip, and we understand that community recovery is inextricably tied to economic recovery and vice versa. And so we've been partnering with economic development to help them, as well as they can help us understand what the needs of businesses are, and we can understand what the linkage between those two categories can be so that we can, in fact, come out stronger. The total investment, including relief funds and entitlement out of the CARES Act, is just over $20 million. Next slide, please. So I want to walk you through here the different categories in a little bit more detail. What we have understood in terms of rental assistance as the primary need, keeping El Pasoans sheltered, making sure that folks can stay in their homes, moving into mortgage assistance, making sure that those homes have warmth and water, as I mentioned, shelter, food, warmth, and water. These are the basic needs. Warmth and water, that's utilities. That's making sure that your gas stays on. That's making sure that your electricity is functioning. That makes sure that your water is still running. You have running water in your home. These things that some of us take for granted, folks need assistance with. We know that residents of El Paso are just struggling to make ends meet, and they are making choices that no one should have to make. And so we have prioritized a tremendous amount of our funding to go towards this category, rental, mortgage, and utility assistance. We know that the assistance will help both tenants and landlords because landlords, you heard from the Apartment Association, I think, at the last meeting, where as tenants don't pay rent, obviously landlords are hurting as well. They have payments and commitments as well. as well. And so there is an inextricable relationship between the tenant and the landlord, and so rental assistance helps on both of those fronts. Mortgage assistance is intended to help our homeowners because we can't leave them out, folks that are struggling to make their mortgage payments. We want to make sure that El Pasoans don't get behind, that El Pasoans don't come out of the crisis weakened, rather, we come out stronger. The second category is homeless assistance and rapid rehousing. These are tied together. When we talk about rental assistance under normal conditions, we typically categorize that as homeless prevention, because that's exactly what it is. Keeping El Pasoans in their home is keeping them from being homeless. And so as we move to another category of support, those folks that we were not able to keep sheltered, those folks that have been displaced, still require assistance. And so obviously, we've invested in emergency shelter for both adults and youth. We've worked extensively with the El Paso Center for Children, and we continue to work with them to provide solutions for our community's homeless youth, and they do a tremendous job on a daily basis, so they've been a pleasure to work with. We're working on the transportation that I already mentioned, making sure that those homeless in our community have access to the Delta Site, which is the welcome center, the door, if you will, to all of the services that we know that they need. But rapid rehousing is the key to homeless assistance. I want to be very clear, what is rapid rehousing? Rapid rehousing means someone has been displaced, they are currently experiencing homelessness, and we want to place them in an environment that is a permanent home for them. The rapid rehousing funding provides rental assistance as well as case management for those individuals, making sure that we're not just putting them in a home and putting a roof over their head and saying, "We're going to pay the rent for a couple of months." No, this is about making sure that those folks have access to the other services that they need, the other support, the wraparound services that they need in order to stay housed. Rapid rehousing is not temporary shelter, it is permanent housing. Go ahead. Next slide, please. Thank you. Food security is something I've mentioned on a number of occasions, and I know that some of you all have had the opportunity to visit the food bank, and you have seen, or maybe you've seen the images online of the cars, lines of cars three miles long. There is a tremendous need in the food security area in our community, but there's a couple of things that we can do. Obviously, we stepped up right off the bat and offered that assistance to the food bank. I have been in constant contact with the food bank, trying to understand what their daily needs are, and as a result of those conversations, we know that we want to allocate funding to the provision of food to El Paso families. That is funding that can go directly to the purchase of food, the provision of food to those families, bringing on folks at the food bank or other pantries, making sure that the food is getting where it needs to go. But we also understand that there's other equipment and infrastructure needs that can help stabilize the food bank and other pantries for the long haul, and that is extremely important to understand as we have so much uncertainty about how long this is going to go, as well as what Wave 2 or 3 might look like. Finally, number four, the Community Assistance Fund. This is something that I believe several folks spoke to at the last council meeting. We have spent countless hours in conference and consultation with our community stakeholders, trying to understand how, once we address rental assistance, how, once we address shelter and food and utilities, there are still so many needs out there. So the Community Assistance Fund is really about providing gap assistance for those household needs that are not otherwise covered. These are sometimes referred to as wraparound, but I want to be very, very clear, we're talking about being able to partner with local philanthropy, which in this case will be the El Paso Community Foundation, to provide funding so that El Pasoans can get the things they need, such as medicine that's not covered by rental assistance, obviously. We want to make sure that they can access the needs that they have if their water heater breaks, or if, for instance, they need to get to their job because they are still employed but their car breaks down. These are household needs that a lot of us take for granted, that prevent other folks from getting back into the workforce and not necessarily having to depend so heavily on these other programs. So the gap assistance could not be more important, and we're working very closely with our partners to make sure that we're able to provide that. Next slide, please. Childcare and respite care, I already mentioned briefly, but I want to mention the difference. Respite care is intended to provide relief for parents and reduce the potential for child abuse during the shelter-in-place order. So you've got a lot of families who are experiencing a tremendous amount of financial pressure, the mental health pressure of being in isolation, and so the ability to offer respite care for those parents and for those kids is something that I think the YWCA has already started doing, and we know that there's an extended need for that. And so we've included respite care as part of our funding recommendations, but that's different from regular childcare services that help support essential workers. And again, I think that Dr. Acosta did a great job at the last meeting explaining that. Credit counseling and bankability, again, I'm not going to reiterate too much here, but we know that we have a need to strengthen financial stability for El Paso businesses and families. This is something that was a tremendous issue prior to COVID, and it is being exponentially exacerbated by the COVID crisis with folks that have lost their livelihood. And then the expanded digital access supports not only homeschooling and folks that are sheltering in place and helps mitigate that isolation, but in addition, it also supports El Pasoans who may not currently have the ability to telework. If we can expand that access, we may be able to provide telework opportunities for folks that may not have already had it. Next slide, please. So all of that being said, these are the categories that I've just gone through in detail, and these are the dollars that we are proposing to allocate to those categories. They are separated on this slide based on the funding source from which they're coming. So for CDBG, the Phase 1 CARES Act allocation, we're proposing $1.5 million for rental assistance, excuse me, $250,000 for credit counseling and bankability, $250,000 towards childcare, $700,000 towards food security, $205,000 and change for prevention of domestic violence and abuse. The respite care component that I mentioned would fall into that category, for a total of $2.9 million. The Emergency Solutions Grant, Phase 1 CARES dollars, have been allocated to the, address the needs of the homeless during this time. Those funding categories are italicized, and you'll see there in the note that items listed in italics are pre-committed. These are funds that we have already committed and will not be going out through a notice of funding availability. But as I mentioned earlier, it supports the emergency shelter for adults as well as youth, the transportation component, and it also pays for the quarantine in the hotel-motel environment for COVID-positive homeless. In terms of the $119 million, the relief funds of the $16 and change, $16.3 million that go to community programs, you can see $10 million has been allocated to rental assistance. And so across the board, between these funding sources, we're allocating $11.5 million towards rental assistance, and that is a reflection of the need and the community input that we have received in terms of how important that is. I do want to note, just as an example, the city of Houston deployed $15 million in rental assistance a week or so ago. It was oversubscribed in 90 minutes. We anticipate that rental assistance will be fully subscribed in very, very short order. We are also proposing $1 million in utility assistance. This may seem like a, well, it is a much smaller amount, but one of the things that we have also done is we've done an assessment of what other funding sources and support is available in this community, and we've been working with entities like Project Bravo, who also typically provide utility assistance, and they have some significant funding coming in from the CARES Act to provide utility assistance for both electric and gas. It does not include water, and so water is one of the categories that we are looking at in terms of utility assistance. I do also just want to mention that we've had a tremendous partnership with Texas Gas. They have really assisted us in understanding what the need is, and we continue to work with them to see how we can assist their customers as much as is possible. Mortgage assistance, $1 million. Rapid rehousing, as I mentioned, as a primary tool to address homelessness in our community, just over $1 million, $1.1 million. This is probably more than double what we would typically allocate to rapid rehousing under normal conditions. Independent contractors, as I mentioned, we're working with economic development, and we've allocated the $1 million to support independent contractors who fell out of other assistance programs. I will say, though, here that we're working very closely with economic development, as it's likely they will be deploying the independent contractor portion. It makes sense as their stakeholder partners are deeply embedded in the business community, and they're going to assist in getting those dollars out. Digital access expansion, as I mentioned before, we've allocated $150,000. That number actually comes from a lot of conversations with IT. We think that we can double the capacity of the MiFi program with that $150,000, and in working with service providers, we've been able to identify an opportunity to expand the MiFi to unlimited data, which any of you all that use a digital device understand the importance of unlimited data and not having to stick to a certain limit. And so we're continuing to work with IT to make sure that those dollars can get deployed to expand that access. And then finally, an additional half a million dollars towards food security. Total, we are proposing $1.2 million be allocated to food security. And next slide, please. So in terms of the funding timeline, we've gotten a lot of questions about how fast can we get this money out and how can we get this on the ground? People need it right now. This is the timeline that we anticipate for deploying this. Based on comments we received from council today and any final comments from our stakeholders, we plan to release the notice of funding availability, which will include all the categories and the dollar amounts I just mentioned, by this Friday, May 29. We ask that providers submit their applications for that funding in those categories by Friday, June 5. We recognize that this is a very quick turnaround, but we have talked with our stakeholders, and in order to get these dollars on the ground as quickly as possible, we have to press for a quick turnaround. We will also be reviewing those applications in very, very short order. We're pulling together an internal community development cross-functional team to be able to review the volume of applications that we anticipate in short order so that we can then bring back a recommendation to council and request authorization to enter into those agreements, no later, no later than June 23. And with that, I'll close my portion of the presentation. Thank you all for indulging me and letting me talk so long.